I'd like to call this meeting to order. Welcome everybody to Hammer City Council Meeting, October 7th, 2014. We'll open our meeting with a prayer by Councilman Wright and then follow that by standing and pledging to the flag. Councilman Wright, will you lodge it with the prayer, please?
Yes, sir. Join me if you would, please. Heavenly Father, again we thank you for this privilege we have to come and to address the needs of our city and as we do this, Lord, we ask that you be with each of us as individuals. May we have the wisdom necessary to make the right decisions for our people. Father, we ask that you bless each one who's here in attendance tonight and, Lord, continue to help us on the council as we seek to find the leader for our administrative services of this town. We'll give you all the credit, in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chris Allen?
Here.
Wayne Bess?
Here.
Buddy Holly?
Here.
Kenyan Lee?
Here.
Ken Minna?
Here.
Including everybody's packet of a copy of the minutes from the September 9th meeting, is there a motion to approve those, please?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Me, second. Second by Councilman Holly. Councilman Me.
No, sir.
Councilman Holly. Floor's open for anyone's had any questions, discussion, corrections, amendments. Call the roll, please.
Chris Allen?
Yes.
Wayne Bess?
Yes.
Buddy Holly?
Yes.
Kenyan Lee?
Yes.
Ken Minna?
Yes.
Lonnie Ruff?
Yes.
Is there a motion to pay the salaries?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Ayler, second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Best. Councilman Ayler.
No, sir.
Councilman Best.
No, sir.
Floor's open for questions or discussion. Call the roll, please.
Chris Allen?
Yes.
Wayne Bess?
Yes.
Buddy Holly?
Yes.
Kenyan Lee?
Yes.
Ken Minna?
Yes.
Lonnie Ruff?
Yes.
At this time we're here at delegations for the delegates. If anyone would like to address council, you may do so at this time. If you would stand and state your name and try to limit your comments to three minutes to accommodate others that might like to speak. Yes, sir.
My name is John Maliski and I'm with the Disabled American Veterans Coalition here in Rome County.
Yes, sir.
I circulated a letter going around to all the governments. I'd like to read it in part. It says, "This is submitted to the Budget Committee on behalf of the Veterans Van Rider Program and I wish to ask for the sum of $5,000 to be used to assist us replace our current vehicle. As you might be aware, we've operated our current van as a community-based service since 2007 and must replace it before we reach 150,000 miles. We currently have over 122,000 miles on it. Process for replacement can take 18 to 36 months. Our current van rider program is administered by the Veterans Administration as they license our van, provide insurance, maintenance, plus pay for the gas and oil. We buy the van and provide the drivers. We are tasked as a shuttle service between Rome County and the Veterans Medical Centers at Murphysboro in Nashville and will take any veteran with a scheduled appointment to either facility." Now, when I took over in March, we had 108,000. We now have 122,000 and the way we're going now is I've got less than one year's worth of service left on our van. So that's our push right now is we need a replacement van. I've talked to the treasurer and he came up with some excellent ideas about getting hold with the police chief and getting a drug seized vehicle. Chief didn't have one right now and he's on the lookout for us, but still I'm making that appeal to all the city governments here in Rome County. We're a nonprofit and we are registered as a 501(c)(3), so drug vehicles can get donated to us. But basically I would like to give this to the secretary and council secretary.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. You may bring it up.
John, check with Sheriff's Office. I know they've got some trouble with some vehicles.
Next Monday I'm gonna get there to help the office and I've got some cars and posts right there by your desk.
We have. We just passed our budget for this year, but we, I'm trying to think if we've got any, if we have any discretionary roadblocks that you may be able to do or we can help you with and all that, you may be able to raise our whole couple thousand dollars anyway. If we have any, we usually have three discretionary roadblocks a year that we can give and I can't remember if that's calendar year or fiscal year, but do you remember, Chief?
It's calendar.
We always talk about that. Now, do we have any left? I don't remember.
I don't remember. It's been a while since we know.
It's right here at the end. If it's calendar year, it's at the end.
Yeah.
But I know everybody here would like to help you as much as we can. We'd even like to give the Veterans Administration a hospital if they would take it, but they won't. You wouldn't need a van then.
Yes, sir. I understand. Well, the reason why I'm here is it's informational purposes and you all are very influential around the community. I also need drivers. There's two of us and if we have four trips that week, then it's a volunteer, no pay and goes from a calling to a bit of a pain, but still a calling anyway.
It is a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Still under delegations. Move on to old business. Councilman Wright, do you have any old business?
No.
Councilman Myers, do you have any? Councilman Ayler?
No, sir.
Councilman Best?
Yeah, I've got a couple things. I wasn't here during the paper mill cleanup and stuff. Could you all bring me up to speed as to where we're at with the paper mill?
Sure. EPA, EPA came in and I'll bring everybody up to speed. EPA came in, declared it an NPL site, priority, so this means they're responsible for the cleanup and they go back on all previous owners. All the previous owners are bankrupt, with the exception of Meat Corporation, which is now Meat Westaco. They, the EPA took over cleanup of part of it, primarily the contaminated soils and stuff on the park that wasn't Meat's and they finished their cleanup last week. So they're moving out, then Meat's coming in and Meat will finish the cleanup. And Meat hopes to finish that and they offer to level all of it, cut all brush down, level all the dirt and get rid of all the contamination and they hope to be through in spring.
I do know I've talked with their attorneys and usually the agreement is that they take it back, they take it, they take the soil back to what its previous use was, which in this case would be industrial. I told them that it was the intention of the council, it's in a flood plain, so I told them it was, it's in the vision of the council that we wanted it to be taken back to green space if we could, so that we could use a park there, football fields or whatever. So they are, they have been super easy to work with and have seemed like they're gonna help any way they can. Meat Corporation, so is he kidding? But that's where we are right now. You drop down there, most of, almost all the buildings are gone now.
That's one of the things too. I went down and looked at the buildings. Meat Corporation said they would leave any buildings that we wanted or they'd tear down any buildings we didn't want. And I found three buildings I think we might want to keep. I'd like to get the council to go down and look at them. If they agree, then we'll tell them we want to keep these three and take care of the rest down. And they are gonna, they are gonna have to fill because it's, it's going to go down, you know, for the old building placement stuff. So they're gonna bring in clean fill and fill it and there's gonna be about four feet of fill down in there.
Let's plan on when the snakes go to sleep. Maybe in November or late November, early, when it gets cold enough, we can walk down there.
Some of their friends live down there.
Yeah.
Snake.
Yeah.
But yeah, we.
I'm not one of that.
They have ownership. They made nice and thorough to work like that.
Foot on's part of it. Foot on's about 15 acres of it, I believe.
Seventeen.
The other is owned by, Don, Donhu's still owns it.
Well, he's in fact.
We could, we can, Donhu has expressed that he would like to, you know, anytime we want to come get it, but we've been leery of the liability, accepting liability so far, so once they clean it up, we can, I think he'll deed it over to us. My foot's property, I don't know what he has planned.
He's gonna have to pay for his part of cleaning. I don't think he's gonna be too happy about that. But anyway, they'll, they'll, he said, in this thing, our old friend, he said that he would, he would do it okay and they have no liability because of bankruptcy.
So Buddy has, now your foot's property, gotta be cleaned up?
The EPA's cleaned it up.
Okay, so then.
This is part of the meeting. I can voice what I, Dr. Fisk has quite a bit of money in that property, you know, he's got quite a large fine that he paid earlier to the EPA and he's gonna get billed for cleanup costs and I think that's gonna be way more than the property will ever be worth. And I'd like to approach him about something, labor council, and ask him if he wanted to donate it to the city. That would do two things. That would give us the property and that would allow him to write off some of these losses that he's incurred. But we'll have to see.
Councilman Best, go ahead and floor.
Thank you. TBA funding, the remaining that we got, where are we at on it?
On the, what's been put in the paper so much lately, this, next Tuesday, I'll have it on the agenda for you all to, I got yours responsive and I prioritized them, I'll have the plan for y'all to pass next Tuesday. If you all pass it next Tuesday, it still has to go before the TBA Foundation to get passed again, then they'll give, then they'll give us the money.
I got one last thing. As running for council as most of you have done, I'll talk to the people and this, I guess my own business because you all discussed it before, one of the biggest things that I hear people saying is how dirty your town is. You ride around it and it's, it's not very clean in areas, there's a lot of improvement and, you know, we can sit and throw stones at anybody and say, well, you need to clean yours up. My opinion is we need to start the ball rolling and I talked to Bear Tibble about maybe getting some inmates, a couple days a week, three or four, dump the park, there's all kinds of work that needs to be done, pressure washing, cleaning, just cleaning, basic stuff, it doesn't cost much money. You know, you're right here beside of Ag Kisses, there's two chairs sitting out there, just mold all over them, been sitting there, I guess, since the hospital left, you know, things like that. We need to get a grip of what's going on and clean it up a little bit and I just think we need to be looking at how we can clean up some of our stuff and I think using, you know, some inmates, I know Drac uses some, but if you ride over to Kingston, they've got seven raid on their parks working every day. I think if we had Bear getting them a couple days a week and just, just cleaning up, just working on the cleanup of here and it saves us a lot of money and make the town look a lot better.
I agree. All three city candidate, city manager candidates we had, that was the one thing that they said, they thought, you know, went the furthest was aesthetically, first impressions and I know with the TBA money that we've all talked about, I think, yeah, it was, it was a priority for almost everybody was, was the cleanup of the, and the appearance of the interstate exits was a priority with everybody, it's high on the list. So that's when I, you know, when you come across the bridge, I was just talking to Bear about how dirty that the railing was. I don't know if that could be pressure washed or painted, but yeah, I agree with you. I coated paint on everything up a lot, corporate. Anything else, Councilman? Councilman Me.
No, sir.
Councilman Holly.
I would like to tell you that I think we need to get an ordinance for the charter, two hours in the charter. One of them is, and here it says, on page 10, page 10, it says, "The city council will appoint the city treasurer, the city attorney, the city judge, the chief financial officer of the management council." And back here on page 14, and this got put in, I think when MTS did editing on it, it says, "The city manager will supervise and control the work of the recorder, chief of police, city attorney, treasurer, and all other officers." So I think we probably need to correct that with an ordinance that says, "Those four officers report directly to the council and he's responsible for all of the staffing." I'm looking at it.
A charter change too, we can send a charter change up in January.
Yeah, but we can fix it now with an ordinance and then send up the charter change.
Would you draft something like that for us?
We would love to. That's all.
Yeah, I would wanna, we've done a charter change already. I'd like to go up there and look at.
I think that, yeah.
Just little ones here and there.
No, I think, I think you're right. I think we need to do, this first year, we've seen two, three things, I think we need to, everybody we need to look together and list and do them.
There's also a typo with this one. It's the only one I found so far. Which is all, all we do for the year.
Anything else?
No, sir.
We'll move on to department reports. Bill Young said he'll be here next week to give his department report. He had to officiate a funeral tonight. Chief Goss?
Yes, Mayor, I got, I got three to work on. Y'all should have the printout file ready. Y'all, just like to remind everybody that this week is National Fire Prevention Week. This is the week where you really get the daycares and the grease, the fire prevention material, not that we don't do it constantly throughout the year, but this is the week that's set aside. We've installed over three dozen smoke alarms just this month alone, so that's picked back up. This always helps, cold weather always kicks things off too, so that adds a little bit to it. This year, I've taken my own coordinator for the Harriman Food City Salvation Army bell ringing. Well, I kind of got tied in there with their committee and they're, they've been going around to the city's issue of challenges, so I'm on the issue, not just my city council, I'm on the issue, a challenge to anybody in the room that if you'd like to come donate some time to Food City at Harriman, ring the bell, just get with me, if you've got some dates or times you might like to do it. It starts on November 22nd, having the kickoff on November 11th at Michael Dunn Center. If anybody wants to attend, it's open to the public, they're gonna have some food and stuff there to give out, but that'll be the kickoff and you can, you can sign up there or again, you can, I've got my email address on here, my phone number, I'm hard to find, so we'll take all the bell ringers that we can get. I mean, it's only like every year, the fire department carries a load of brunt down around them. I know we've got to get the war out sometimes, bring it down, or ring two or three hours a day, you know, when we've got time to do it, but I think it helps to a great cause. But again, I'm issuing a challenge to do all of it, everybody else has been issued and pretty much accepted, so.
Before you move on, what, is the dates in here somewhere that?
It's any dates, Commissioner. It's just starting over here on the 22nd.
Is it every day?
We do it every day, but Sunday. We don't go at home Sundays.
Until?
They're wanting to cut it off about the 23rd of December. They're wanting to at least try to run it up to that far. They wanted to go to Christmas Eve and I told them, you know, that's, you know, you're kind of taking away from people's, you know, family time then, so we're looking to cut it off about, about 23rd. But I mean, it's any date, you can do it or any time, I mean, whatever, you know, whatever's best, you know, for, for an individual. On October 16th, you've also got a little, little printout paper there that I gave you in conjunction with TMA, FEMA, and a bunch more organizations. They're coming up with this what's called the Great Shakeout Earthquake Grills. It's gonna be set at a certain time. It's set at 10:16 a.m. in the morning. They're wanting everybody to try to do some, some sort of grill. I've been talking with the scoops and trying to get them involved in, in on this, but due to the earthquakes, it's, I mean, I'm, we're having small ones around us everywhere, it's the sound that they're wanting to really kick off to try to, just to try to get people really involved in it. I don't know how it's gonna go, but Harriman Fire Department's taking that on, just to see if we can get the, get a little push on it to try to help out, so. Since May 2014, Harriman Fire Department has logged over 125 hours of the American Heart Association Free Family and Friends CPR class that I've, that I've already dropped to y'all before. We've been to churches, I actually done one small church in Morton County for them last week, but so far today, it's a, that's 125 hours, I think it's been, I mean, you know, it's not costing. The only guy that's done is used our mannequins and everything else, you know, paid for and stuff, but that's 125 hours, you know, it saved one person's life and it's a, and I've got more classes scheduled up. Again, if any churches here within the city, I sent out an invitation, I sent letters out that they're, we want them, all they gotta do is contact me or the other guy that's a CPR instructor and we'll set it up. That's all our best.
Yeah, I got just a couple things. Give you an overall report from our Kena School. Went really well. We had a total of 26 teams. If you saw during that week, one of the hotels, you saw nothing but Kenaing trucks down down S U B, so it was really good. We're actually gonna make about $1,068 profit on that. Also got to get my Kena house for Trent for free and also all the certifications for free, so we saved quite a bit in there out there, so I did really well. The other thing is the courts of praise, they do it every year, just to discuss, get here, no one about this, October 26th, they usually block off, do like a little block party between Trent Street and Rome Street, out there in front of the library and Warden Street, so just be aware on Sunday from 12 to 4, they're gonna have like a little celebration out there. I usually allow them to do that every year, just to be aware of that. The other thing is, I don't know, I didn't get to report on the agenda, did you all get the seed vehicles on the agenda, go deal? Okay. Can we go over now or you go over?
Oh, I know, I need to wait the general, see if they can do it that way.
Okay, gotcha. That's all I got for you.
Governor, you have any? Mayor?
Just one report, we have finished the golf course roof. Those repairs, as many of you know, we had to place basically all the shitting on the roof, asking them, so what kind of disaster we got into. However, due to the estimates we were using, which was from the insurance company, we still got out $300 under my original estimate, so I'll feel tickled about that. There's a little bit of cosmetic work still to be done as far as trim work, but the actual roofing itself is all completed.
It looks good. Thank you. Committee reports. Being known, we'll move on to discussing possibly surplus metal shed that was damaged in the storm at the golf course and put it up for auction. There, there was a, one of those green sheds that you all have seen so many times, it was blown across the golf course and torn up pretty bad and they need to surplus it or scrap it, but they need to have authorization from us first to do that. It's, it's of no value at all to us. Motion to surplus, scrap.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Holly and a second by Councilman Ayler. Councilman Holly. Councilman Ayler?
I think they should just scrap it if it's of value.
Floor's open for question or discussion.
The only thing they said, they've had a few people, because it's laying away, looking bad anyway, some people have offered to buy it so they can, I guess, form it back together, so that's why they said they might look at options to scrap and do a few more.
Okay. Any more discussion? Did we, did we authorize over there to, I think I remember those poles, did we authorize to surplus those poles?
The ones in the park.
Uh huh. Okay, but they haven't had any one yet.
They're.
I can't remember if.
I think so.
No, they're still there.
Yeah.
I'm trying to remember what, do we need to do anything else? We, as long as we've done that, they can auction.
Yeah, they're on, I think. Just like, they came up in the same meeting, the shed, that they were talking about putting on auction, because it's been coming up for meetings for about the last six months.
Yeah. Okay. Floor's open. Discussion. Call the roll, please.
Chris Allen?
Yes.
Wayne Bess?
Yes.
Buddy Holly?
Yes.
Kenyan Lee?
Yes.
Ken Minna?
Yes.
Lonnie Ruff?
Yes.
Couldn't skip number nine, we're still trying to tally the scores on that. Put it on next week's agenda, please. Next item on the agenda is discuss and possibly take action on hiring an attorney to handle the Harriman Hospitality case and the Pinnacle Point case to close those out. The recommendation by Harold Balcom is to maybe hire Sandy McPherson or Greg Lefieux to close those cases out. One party in the Harriman Hospitality case needs to be dismissed from the case. There's also a couple of the parties that are involved have offered to settle, so we need representation to take action on that, to either accept it or not and to dismiss that other party. And then on the Pinnacle Point, there's some loose ends I think that need to be tied up. He said there's minimal cost in doing all of that, so, but either way, we need to, we need to hire enough to handle that. I asked Sandy McPherson the other day if he would be interested. He needed to check and see if there was a conflict of interest on the Pinnacle Point because I think he's, he has represented some of those people before, so he needs to check, but Harold said Sandy or, or Greg Lefieux could, would do just fine on those.
Make a motion, we hired Sandy McPherson, assuming there's no conflicts. Thank you.
And if there is?
Pursue Greg Lefieux.
Motion on the floor is to hire Mr. Pursue, Sandy McPherson first and if he can't, can't do it for some reason, then move on to the other. Is there a second? Second by Councilman Best. Councilman Ayler?
I just know that Mr. McPherson's been a respected, longtime attorney, familiar with goings on in Harriman, I think he'd make an excellent choice for us.
Councilman Best?
No, sir.
Floor's open for question or discussion.
Since we all had this come up every now and then, is, since, you know, about right there, are we gonna look at maybe having it put on the agenda for November for any city attorneys in Harriman to apply or we just gonna go every time and ask and use MTS in the evening twenty times?
I would, if we could talk about it in a workshop, we'd be, we need to decide if we're gonna put it on for, up for election to carry out Harold's term or if you all want to hire an attorney to handle the day-to-day issues, we need somebody badly to handle. I need to be able to call, I can't call anybody for any of this stuff that we're doing, so we need to talk about that. Yeah, I'm glad you brought it up. And, and put something on the November agenda. We need a city attorney badly. We're saving money right now. Councilman Best, if you, the floor is yours, you got any? Floor is still open for question or discussion about this.
City attorney?
City, no. Harriman Hospitality and Pinnacle Point.
Who made the motion?
Councilman Ayler.
Councilman Ayler, in the event that McPherson has, has problems, and I think you said that was Pinnacle Point case, are we saying that we turn both cases over to Lefieux?
Yes. In that lead? Yes.
Floor is still open. Any more questions? The motion, excuse me, the motion is to hire Sandy McPherson and see about his availability and then Greg Lefieux in that order to close out the Harriman Hospitality, Harriman Hospitality and the Pinnacle Point case. Any more discussion? Call the roll, please.
Chris Allen?
Yes.
Wayne Bess?
Yes.
Buddy Holly?
Yes.
Kenyan Lee?
Yes.
Ken Minna?
Yes.
Lonnie Ruff?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is discuss and possibly authorize Sandy McPherson to auction off properties that owe delinquent taxes. We have got several parties in our city that owe us over eight years of tax, over four years of tax, and we, we always wait for, for the county to do something about it or we never wait, we never auction properties off. I talked to Sandy the other day, I know we've talked about it before, in workshops, now that we have an industrial board and, and the, you know, the hospital buildings are almost all sold now, but this is the perfect setup, if we wanted to authorize Sandy to go after people that, that owe, that are delinquent for more than three years, like the county does, and let's go after them and either they pay up or we auction their property off.[1786.08] they pay up or we auction their property off, if we auction it, we can turn it over to the industrial board, we don't have to auction it, we can let them sell it, uh, same way they've been doing, so, um, I, I think we can do it, we've got several pieces of property in there, uh, and, and it's hundreds of thousands of dollars of, of taxes.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, what's the motion?
Uh, is that we authorize Sandy McPherson to, uh, auction off the delinquent properties.
I think he said we need to go, I think he said the properties need to be delinquent more than three years.
Uh-oh.
For some reason.
Maybe that needs to say, oh, delinquent taxes in excess of...
In excess of three years. Okay, you made the motion, who's second?
I did.
Councilman Holly, Councilman Holly, do you have anything? The floor's open for question or discussion.
I'd just like to say real quick, I think, you know, it's unfair to the citizens of Harrington that pay their taxes on a regular basis, that there are people who owe for eight years, I'm, I'm excited about this because, uh, it's, that's just, it's just way overdue in my opinion, I hope we can collect quickly or, uh, otherwise, uh, take the properties over.
Still open for question, discussion.
What kind of, uh, payment or deal do we have worked out with McPherson on this? Is he a percentage of what he gives, or...
I don't know, he, he is our delinquent tax attorney now, uh, maybe you can...
All those, uh, in that period of time that you are talking about are in court cases now, and have been filed with court for collection, it's a matter of finding them and making them pay up, um, if, uh, if they don't collect them through the court system within a ten year period, if they get ten years old in the court dispositions, so, it's, it's basically everything back at the time from twenty thirteen are in court cases, huh?
So what are we hiring them for, in the pursuit of court case or...
Well, if he, if he auctions them off, they would be removed from the court case.
So just, even though it's in court already, he can step in and say that?
He, he can remove them from, he can petition the court to have them removed from the court case.
A lot of times what they're doing, he was telling me, a lot of times what they do is they'll wait, they'll wait until the very last day, and then they'll show up and pay their county taxes, they keep them current, they don't pay, they don't pay out.
So if we let them go, the county touches?
Or the county never auctioned them, or they just continue to owe us, and they don't pay us, they don't ever pay.
Do you know if we as a city owe any outstanding debts now through any of our organizations or anything? That, I mean, I don't want, just like on some of the other things, I'd kinda like to practice what we preach to them, and I'm okay with doing that, but, you know, like the liquor tax money and stuff like that, but we...
Well, we're, we're making, we just found out about that.
Take care.
Yeah, we just found out about that, and we, uh, we passed a, a payment plan, and, uh, they accepted it, so we're good there. That's act, that's actually not, that's actually not delinquent, we just, they just made a ruling on it. Floor's still open for question or discussion.
Do we need to add in excess of three years but less than ten years? Because we can't actually do that if this two-year campaign. Do we need to say in, uh, taxes owed in excess of three years but less than ten years? Did you say it?
Uh, I think Sandy should word that.
Well, it disappears if you take it.
I wasn't aware of the three years, so, I thought you could sell them within, uh, the, our, uh, previous language, I think it's still in the charter, says that after June of the following year, you can take action to sell property if taxes aren't paid, that's real quick, and we haven't, we haven't, uh, done that, but, uh, if you look at the language, see if that's still in there.
Yes.
Could you get us a list of those, before we're not saying, the properties and the value that we could...
Sure, we can run them off.
As soon as practical, after the first two, do you begin with the succeeding year after the taxes have been assessed? You can, uh, prepare the description and take the action, so you can wait just one year if you want to.
Yes, uh, that's our own charter, so, we don't have to wait for the three years, but according to our charter, now, I don't know about what other rules apply, either state or county.
Do you want us to look at this in place, Frank?
But I, I think it'd be good if Sandy were advising on that, or we have to do the sale.
I see, the county does theirs in its three years, and they put theirs on Gov. Deals, and from looking at it, everything they've been selling is going high dollar, I don't know why, but, if you talk to the county, everything they're selling property wise, it's on Gov. Deals, they don't have to fool with it, they just put it on there, uh, just like I guess we, we still do the surplus that way, so...
Of course, the, the person owns the property has a year to redeem it.
Right.
They have to pay, uh, the cost that was allocated by the individual plus interest.
But we've got some big taxpayers in the city, they won't pay us, and they're paying our county taxes.
Yeah, we, we have one in particular I'll mention, but, uh, who has been a good, uh, payer up until two years ago.
Yeah, a big money dude.
Has lots of property.
Yep. Okay, so there's a motion and a second, they're still under discussion. There being none, call her up, please.
Chris Ayler?
Yes.
Wayne Best?
Yes.
Buddy Holly?
Yes.
Kenyon Lee?
Yes.
Ken Minna?
Yes.
Lonnie Rott?
Yes.
Zero, can I get a motion to waive the agenda rule, please? Motion by Councilman Holly, second. Second by Councilman Best, uh, all in favor of waiving the agenda rule, please, vote with aye, any votes likewise, um, I'm, ask for the waive the agenda rule, you should have included in your packet a copy of, uh, some drug fund vehicles, a nineteen ninety-eight Chevy Malibu, a ninety-eight Saturn, nine, uh, seventy-five model Chevy Impala, and ninety-four Chrysler, ninety-six Cadillac, two thousand Cadillac, uh, old computers that were seized by, um, ICAC and in the basement of where we are right now, also some old desks and other things that are downstairs, as well as the old traffic lights that we have that are just piled up down there, um, where'd we get the old desks from?
Building across the street.
That's right, yeah, um, what we're asking to do is for, for you all to surplus these and give authorization to move forward with auctioning them off on Gov. Deals as well. Motion by Councilman Wright, second. Second by Councilman Holly, Councilman Wright?
No, uh, other than, Mayor, we probably ought to, uh, ask, uh, Kenny Humphries to take a look at all the stuff under this building, that we don't use, not gonna use, and perhaps get in on the, who is.
Let's see, I think we can include that if you all want to, I know there's old computers and old desk. Okay, you had some here, the approval of these, the old desk and other surplus items in the basement of the city complex.
I think we have some out in South Harrington as well, old computer that are stacked out there, if I'm not mistaken, uh, no, they're gone, are they?
Yeah, we saw a couple pallets of those, I think.
Okay.
Got a motion and a second, Councilman, uh, Holly?
No.
Floor's open for question or discussion. There being none, call her up, please.
Chris Ayler?
Yes.
Wayne Best?
Yes.
Buddy Holly?
Yes.
Kenyon Lee?
Yes.
Ken Minna?
Yes.
Lonnie Rott?
Yes.
Been a long day, been doing, seeing y'all, but, we need to close it out, sir, is there a motion or, uh, is there a, a second?